Okay, that moves us on to the next item. And this is a discussion and setting a public hearing for December 21st, 2021, ordinance number 2021-14. This is to amend City Code Chapter 180, wards. To redefine ward lines to comply with a constitutional requirement to equalize populations amongst wards. Would you like to address this?
I'll start it off, and then Clerk Keniston will actually have a brief PowerPoint presentation to go with that with you. So, as you know, this is always a very political subject, especially at the national level and the state level, where these boundary lines are drawn for elected positions. And of course, we're going through that at the state level right now. At the city level, this is an administrative process. We simply, we look at that, Clerk Keniston will explain the process by which we do that. But we don't take into consideration which councilors live where, how that may affect. We don't have political parties here, obviously, at the local level. We don't take those things into consideration. It's simply an exercise of looking at, making sure we have the right numbers of population in the right wards of the city. And we don't take anything else into consideration. This, in some communities across the country, there's been a lot of discussion on the city manager's chat site about this, how it's turned from an administrative process into a very nasty political process, which this city does not have a history of that nasty sort of behavior. So I hope we don't go in that direction. I'm not suggesting we're going to. But there's been a lot of comments that were made to city staff about this, and a lot of influence peddling. And we don't take any of that into consideration. We have a process by which we follow, we do that. And how it affects individual councilors or neighborhoods is not the issue. It's to find those lines up so they make sure the right population's in the right place. Just keep that in mind. Now, what you choose to do, this gets turned over to the council, of course, is up to you. We're going to make a recommendation, and we're not going to change that recommendation. We're going to provide it to you, and again, and it's your decision to make on how you handle that. So without any further ado, I'll have Clerk Keniston go ahead and make your presentation.
Okay, I'm just going to share my screen here so I can pull up the PowerPoint for you. Maybe.
Yeah.
Yep, sorry. There we go. All right, are you able to see it?
Yes, we are.
Okay, my apologies for fumbling. I'm on a small laptop at home, so I'm not as nimble with it as I am with my computer in my office. So I'm going to keep-
Realize who you're talking to.
So I'm going to keep this as brief as possible for you tonight. I do have some slides to show you, but I think it's really important for you guys to get some good visuals for making your decision on this. So we'll just jump right in. So the reason we're doing it via ordinance instead of a charter amendment is because the voters gave you guys the authority back in March of 2012 to do it this way. It definitely streamlines the process, makes it much easier for everybody involved, and allows us to address it quickly. This, my current role is, as Manager Malholland just explained, is just to present this recommendation to the city council, and the ultimate decision on these ward lines will be made by you. So the ordinance that we're discussing tonight is for Chapter 180, which is wards. My proposal is not to change anything with the boundaries for Ward 1, and we'll be changing the ward boundaries for Ward 2 as well as Ward 3, which are both Sections 180-4 and 180-5 respectively. And we're also going to be revising language, which will allow elected officials to continue serving out their term until it expires, in that Section 180-2. So the proposed wording for 180-2 is, notwithstanding any changes in the ward boundaries, the city and ward officers serving in office or elected to office at the time of passage of any amendment to this ordinance shall continue in said offices until the end of the terms for which they were elected. So obviously, if a counselor is affected or if one of our election officials, such as a moderator or supervisor of the checklist, were affected, this would allow them to remain in term without creating any immediate vacancies that we would then have to address. It wouldn't halt our business, we'd be able to continue on. Does anyone have any questions on this before I move on?
Anyone? No, apparently not.
Okay, no problem. So moving on to Sections 184, which is Ward 2, and 185, which is Ward 3. I'm not going to get into all the wording. You guys can read that on your own. It's a lot of descriptive directions, right turns and left turns. Just going to show you visuals to help you with this decision. So some of the requirements of adjusting the ward lines. The reason we're doing this is it is required by the city charter, as well as state and federal laws, to be conducted within every census period. Obviously, we just had a census period, which was the 2020 federal census. We do have to look for the deviation of population in our three wards. And that acceptable standard deviation would be 5% or less. And as we're adjusting our ward lines, we have to make sure that the ward lines are following easily identifiable physical features. So that would be roads, or railroads, or natural bodies of water, things of that nature. The lines also have to follow census blocks, which is where a lot of this is going to hinge on, and we'll go over that. The good news about most of the census blocks is a lot of them do already follow some easily identifiable features. Others are a little trickier to work with, and I'll show you some examples in a moment. So this is what the block data looks like that I'm working with. So this is an example of a nice area of block data. As you can see, the city is broken down into various blocks by the Census Bureau. I'm just going to show you. So this section right here, which would be Green Street to Elm to Kimball to School, all those residents in the middle have a population of 100. So that would be a nice block for me to pull in if I wanted to use this block to make adjustments with. It's a nice, easy one to work with, as you can see. One of the things I was hoping when I initially started this project, before I had the data available to me, is I was hoping that there was some sort of, like, a subset of data that I would be able to drill in and actually focus just on one street or one side of that block. But unfortunately, I can't. I have to take the entire block or none at all. So please keep that in mind as we go forward. And now, this is an example of a trickier area to work with. This is what you're looking at here is the top of Ward 1, which, again, I'm not changing. I'm just showing this to you as an example, and the top of Ward 2. And we're looking at this big piece of land right here. So as you can see, that piece of land has 407 people in it. And that actually extends off the screen. It's so big, I couldn't show you the whole thing. If I needed to move in 407 people out of Ward 1 into Ward 2, I'd have to take that whole block. But then, I run into these little islands here. There's other blocks, Sachem Circle, and then also we have Lash Road and Gilson Road. So you can see that sometimes there's areas where it is a little trickier to work with. And I also couldn't say, oh, I need, you know, 192 people. I'm just going to pull in Sachem Village, because then I'm not working with that block data any longer, and I'm not in compliance. So there were areas that I wasn't able to touch because of that. So just to show you what we have for the census data for Lebanon, we have grown a little bit. So we've got 14,282 people here. And we had to look at the populations that were existing when our current ward boundaries. And what we found was that we did have a deviation. Wards 1 and 3 was pretty good, 3.5%, so that's within the standard deviation. Wards 1 and 2 was 5.02%, so it was just outside of that standard. And Wards 2 and 3 came in at 8.33%. So that's where we're getting this cause for having to make the adjustment. And when we adjust Wards 2 and 3, it will actually also correct the difference between Wards 1 and 2 as well. It will reduce that deviation. And then, just to give you a picture of what that looks like, just to show you the large difference between those different populations. And hold on one moment. My apologies, I have a teenager rolling through the house. I had to just get her to quiet down for a moment. So the proposal for the new ward lines, because we have to follow the census blocks, and you can see some of the tricky pieces I'm working with, it ended up being inevitable that I was going to have to move people back and forth between the two wards. So I'm moving-
Hey, Kristen.
Oh, yep.
Quick question. You may want to read these for us, because with the background color, we-
Too hard.
It's difficult to see the- Yes, please.
Okay. Would you like me to back it up to the previous slide, or is this okay?
Um, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that'd be helpful if you could back it up, please.
Okay, so we'll go back to this one. So that middle box, which I didn't read, it says the population within the existing ward boundaries. Ward 1 has 4,783 people. Ward 2 has 4,543 people. And Ward 3 has 4,956 people. And I'll just recap that deviation for you real quick. So between 1 and 2, it's a 5.02% deviation. Between 2 and 3, it's 8.33%. And between 1 and 3, it's 3.5%. Go past this. All right, so the top block says, because we must follow the census blocks, it's inevitable that people will be moved amongst both Wards 2 and 3 in order to equalize the population. So that means 265 people to move from Ward 2 to Ward 3. 505 people will be moving from Ward 3 to Ward 2. And the new ward populations will be, in Ward 1, will remain at 4,783 people. And coincidentally enough, Ward 2 will also have 4,783 people. And Ward 3 will have 4,719. So they come out pretty equal. So obviously, there is no more deviation between Wards 1 and 2. And there is less than 2% deviation from Ward 3 to the other wards with this. And then that's just to show you how it equals out the population, just so you have a nice visual there. You can see that they're a lot more equal now. All right, and then this is what the new ward lines are going to look like. And you have copies in your agenda of both the existing ward lines, as well as my new proposed ward lines. And we're going to go through and break down the sections for you real quick, so you can see where the changes are occurring. So on this map, this is the boundaries right now. The pink lines represent the existing ward boundaries. And then those colored areas represent what the new boundary, or, excuse me, what the new wards would be. So Ward 1, again, not changing. And then you'll see Ward 2 and Ward 3, there's some changes in there. They're both represented. Ward 2 is yellow, and Ward 3 is brown. So Section 1 is moving some voters from Ward 2 to Ward 3. And Section 2 is also moving some voters from Ward 2 to Ward 3. That biggest concentration of the 505 people is coming here in Section 3, where people are moving from Ward 3 back into Ward 2. So I'm going to go through now, and I'm going to explain to you the different areas one at a time. So just the three sections. So Section 1 would be 65 people moving from Ward 2 to Ward 3. And this is in the Dartmouth Ave area. And you can see it right there on the map, how it's moving. That pink line, again, is the existing boundary line. And those colored sections are going to be the new boundaries. That follows the census block, as you can see, just so you can see what I'm working with. So this would affect Dartmouth Ave, and then just a certain portion of Hanover Street. So it would only affect the range, just the even house numbers or building numbers, from 174 to 304. And Hanover Street is actually currently split between Wards 2 and 3. And I'm just going to take a second just to briefly tell you about split streets. So what happens is, especially along the borders of the various wards, inevitably, you wind up with streets that are split. You could have a situation where your neighbor across the street is in a totally different ward than you. And there have been instances on a couple of streets where your next-door neighbor is actually in a different ward. And it just has to do with how the census blocks fall. So we call those split streets. So Section 2, we're moving 200 people from Ward 2 to Ward 3. And this section is the section down in the lower southern corner of our city, down along where Meriden Road meets the Plainfield Line. And so we're discussing this section right here. You can see I'm pulling in 200 people. We're going to, I'm only going to tell you about the full street ranges on these slides, but I'll tell you about the handful of streets that are split towards the end. We've only got a couple more slides left, but it'll be at the end, just because it's a little easier to cover as they go back and forth between the wards. So the, these wards, or, excuse me, these streets will be moving from Ward 2 to Ward 3. We have Barden Hill Road, Churchill Way, Mary Lane, Patch Road, and Walhoun Way. And then we have Section 3, which is going to be this wedge-shaped area right here. And that's where we're picking up 505 people from Ward 3 to Ward 2. And that's just a little close-up of it. So right here, this is Meriden Road. And this is currently split down the middle, where part of this is currently in Ward 2, and then the other side of the street happens to be in Ward 3. I'm proposing that we pick up part of School Street, which was also in Ward 3, and move everything into Ward 2, because it just makes sense for that neighborhood. So this boundary line is going to come up here to Prospect Street. And on La Plant Road, you're going to see where the voters are actually switching back and forth. You have some that are moving from Ward 3 to Ward 2, and some that are Ward 2 to Ward 3. So they're kind of reversing in this area. So the full street ranges, again, Follinsby Ave, Garnet Street, Grandview Ave, Gray Street, Hillcrest Drive, Kenny Street, Larro Street, Ledge Lane, Melrose Street, Messenger Street, Pearly Ave, Rita Street, Skylark Road, and Woodland Drive. So those, all of, both sides of those roads, everything's going into Ward 2 from Ward 3. And then we'll talk about, just real quickly, the, just the streets that happen to be split between both wards, and how it's going to be affected. So Dartmouth College Highway used to be split between Wards 2 and 3, and that no longer will be split. It'll all be a part of Ward 3 now. La Plant Road, it still remains a split road, but it's going to flip-flop, as I was trying to explain on that previous slide. So the odd ranges of house numbers 3 to 97 will move to Ward 3. And the even numbers 2 to 12 will remain in Ward 3, because they're just above where Prospect Street is. And then the even range 20 to 104 will be moving into Ward 2. Meriden Road and School Street, I'm addressing together, since the road basically just becomes the other, regardless of which way you're traveling. So Meriden Road, it is still going to be split, but we're actually able to pull more of the people into Ward 2, particularly those who are actually closer to the Ward 2 polling location anyways. So the odd range of 263 to 523 will be moving into Ward 3. And just to visualize that, that is that big brick house just on the other side of La Plant Road, as you're heading south towards Plainfield. So from that brick house to the border, just that side of the road will now be Ward 3. Everything else on Meriden Road and School Street will now be all Ward 2. And then Prospect Street, that was already split. It's just going to split a little differently now. So the odd side of the road, with the exception of just the very beginning, 3 to 5, which is kind of near where the little store is, that will remain in Ward 2. But the rest of the odd side will become part of Ward 3. And then my last slide, just to just give you an idea of what would happen upon approval to the voters that are in these particular wards, because, again, remember, we've been talking about the population, not necessarily registered voters, but that does have an effect on them. So it would end up moving 187 voters from Ward 2 to Ward 3. 328 voters would be moved from Ward 3 to Ward 2. When this occurs, the voters will be notified of the change. I'll be sending them a letter in the mail. We'll also get word out on the website. Voters are not going to be required to re-register to vote. This is one of the only times where a voter changes wards, and it's just done automatically, because it's not their fault that they're now in a different ward. And then, again, upon approval, city councilors and election officials that would be affected by this change will be able to finish their existing terms, which would, again, keep you in place and able to continue with city business. And that's the end of my presentation, if you have any questions.
Thank you, very thorough. Counselors, questions for Kristen?
Yes. I have a-
You shouldn't mute until I speak.
Everybody can just mute? Kristen?
I think you're-
I think you're good backseat.
Okay, so I was curious, the census block data, in the division between Ward 1 and Ward 2, just north of Old Pine Tree Cemetery Road, it's actually, that whole area, it follows the power line. So I was just curious if the census block data actually follows the power line in that area north of Interstate 89?
So I would have to actually go and pull into, pull into that file that I had that I was working with, to see if it does follow the power lines. I don't think it does in those instances, but I can get that information for you for the next round.
Right, that, I think it's, the streets are Rio Vista, and can't quite make it out, but there's a little neighborhood there that's partially undeveloped. You know, there's some housing that's been built there.
Yes. I know which one you're talking about. I had started to use that one, but I don't have enough. It wasn't encompassed enough in its own block. It was just lumped in as one of the big numbers I couldn't work with.
Yeah, so it's just sort of just curious, because the census blocks tend to follow the streets rather than-
Yeah, those tend to follow the street, yeah.
Yes, Counselor Hill?
I do have a few questions. Um, it looks like, I guess I was taking notes, and it looked to me like there were 65 people moving from Ward 2 to Ward 3, 200 from Ward 2 to Ward 3, and then 505 from Ward 3 to Ward 2. Is that, am I right? How many, how many voters are changing wards altogether? How many voters are affected?
So 187 out of Ward 2 and 328 of Ward 3.
Okay, so I must have just written down the numbers wrong, so, um-
Because remember, the numbers I gave before were population, not necessarily voters. And then, but it does automatically affect voters, and that was a different subset of numbers.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. So it looks like 515 voters is what we're projecting to affect?
Yep, somewhere there in, yep.
Can you talk about your process? How, did you, and it sounds like there's challenges working with the data and everything, and being constrained by census blocks. Did you come up with different, different maps that affected different numbers of voters? Like, how many kind of scenarios did you run through your process?
I was able to come up with three, and this ended up being by far the best. The other two didn't make sense from that perspective of what makes sense to the neighborhood, what makes sense to that area. It was just kind of gratuitously pulling in random numbers here and there along the border, and it didn't make as much sense as this move does make.
And so when you were, so talk, can you also talk a little bit more about the criteria? It sounds like you were trying to look at neighborhoods. I see the charter obviously lays out that all wards shall be composed of contiguous and compact territory.
Yep.
And that they're to follow easily identified, identifiable physical features, such as streets, railroad tracks, service waters, or power lines. Can you just talk a little bit more about what were the criteria that you used, whether it was these things or other things?
So where I mainly started focusing was in the Ward 2 and Ward 3 boundaries along the School Street and Meriden Road corridor. And it didn't, it's never made sense to me that somebody who pretty much almost, like, almost lives across from their polling place, or a polling place, doesn't vote there. But the people at the far end of the town on the border do. So I was looking at that in conjunction with some of the, some of the blocks I was pulling in, and said, okay, this makes the most sense proximity-wise, and it's a continuous flow of people all along that corridor. So that's why I ended up focusing on this option.
The proximity to polling location was one of your criteria that-
That was, that was one of it, because it kept them all together as opposed to splitting them off. It just made it, made more sense to me to do it that way.
Just a few more questions. How many, have you had any public meetings as you were putting together your different scenarios?
No, no, we just got the data, and I've put it together for you. The only public hearing that we'll have will be December 1st, if you set it.
Okay, and how many people, how many residents, and in particular, I'm interested in residents of Lebanon, how many people have gotten in touch about redistricting?
I, well, from the grander scheme of things with redistricting, I've heard from a handful of people, but they were talking more on the state representative level, which is outside of my purview. I have not heard anyone, from anyone who wanted to weigh in on anything else regarding the city's boundaries, other than just the state officials looking for my data. That's it.
Okay, is the data available on the city website?
The block data? It is not currently right now, no. It's, it was a link that was set up for me to use via the planning office. I could work with Sean and Mark Goodwin about making that available.
Great, so I have some, I have some comments, but I don't want to get in anyone else's way if they have questions or other things, so I'll, I'll yield for now.
Anyone else? Counselor Sykes?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Kristen, I'd like to make, echo that request for the, is the block data, so that we can more fully understand why voters get moved from one ward to another. Obviously, one of my concerns is the confusion on the part of voters. We already have people always showing up at the wrong voting location, because they don't know what ward they're in. And the more people that we move, the more likelihood there'd be additional confusion. So that, that will help me look at it.
Okay, yeah, I can absolutely do that. Just keep in mind that every 10 years when we do this, inevitably, people are moved. And it's, it does stink, but that's unfortunately how we have to do it to make these populations more equitable.
Anyone else before Counselor Hill continues with other questions? Oh, go ahead.
Great, um, so this is, and I was here 10 years ago when we did this, and there are always, you know, just because of the way demographics change and density happens in the city, certain areas, certain wards grow at a different rate than other ones. So I think, you know, that's, there always is some change that's going to be required. Given that, I think this is a really important decision. It actually is a policy decision that the city council makes. It's in the charter. This is the responsibility of the city council. And so this is a, it's very helpful for staff to put together a proposal. This is really important for our residents to drive this process. It's really important that the people who are going to be affected by this have a chance to understand what the implications are, and to let us know what they think. I think a public hearing obviously is important. I think we may need some more time. I'm not ready tonight to schedule a public hearing, especially given all of the other public hearings that we are scheduling for December 1st. To me, this is something that happens once every 10 years. It has the possibility to affect hundreds of people. And I think that it would be wise for us to take some more time to really study this matter. We can make the data available, so that members in the community who are interested in looking at this and looking at different scenarios can also run some scenarios themselves. I think public participation is really important. So that's my sense, is that this is an important decision. We should take some time and particularly engage, find ways to engage the public before we make a decision that's going to affect our residents for the next 10 years.
Kristen, uh, Kristen, the city manager, could you tell us what if any state deadlines were under here that might constrain this?
Well, the Senate has already made the decision. They're going to hold off, because the census data was provided to us late. So they've made the decision, they are going to wait for the cities to be able to do this. The other cities are doing the same thing that we're doing. They've got their public hearings scheduled already. The House has chosen to move ahead without us anyway, and they're going to make their own decisions. At least the House Committee is, and presenting that to the full House. We'll see what happens with that. Have they been working on it? We've started the first week of November. There's different methodologies and maps that they have looked at. So the process is already behind schedule. And again, the Senate was gracious enough, Senator Gray, who managed that committee he's on the Manchester City Council, recognized that the fact that cities are in this spot because of the delayed data, and that they're holding off, waiting for us. So I would suggest you really don't have a whole lot of time to do this.
Well, I understand what you're saying. Last time, 10 years ago, we actually, if you remember the date, we did this two years after the census was done. So we did it in 2012. So we have all the time that we need to make this the right, to do this right. We can take as much time as we need.
Yes, Counselor Littlesey?
I mean, I guess my flip side of this, and I say this as someone who's had to build and run Monte Carlo simulations and other data analysis, like, the fact that we're, like, Ward 1 and Ward 2 is the same population, and there's, what, 74 people, so you're talking, let's say, 2% just to round it, difference between- difference between wards one and two, and then Ward three, like, just as a starting point, that's really impressive. But the other piece is, I agree, the public should participate. I don't think that precludes us from not meeting on the first. Do we need to vote on the first? Not necessarily. We can put that off. But I think, like, if you're this interested in having the public be engaged, like, I think having it on the first is the right first step. Like, let's make the data available, but like, let's give people a chance to weigh in. We can take that and go back. You don't have to delay the process to hear from the people, and then say, okay, you know, we hear you. Let's, let's revisit this again. Maybe we come back and this is the next council meeting, or whatever. But, like, I would push forward on the public hearing to keep it rolling.
Counsel Widdowson?
Thank you. I think my response to that, normally, I would agree. I think it's important to get public input and get public input quickly. I certainly appreciate the hard work the clerk has done to, to make these very complicated and frustrating blocks into something logical. But at this point, as we're discussing this and setting a public hearing, we are looking at setting a public hearing two weeks from today, knowing that we have a holiday, typically a holiday when some people are traveling in between. So that potentially limits how much people can hear about this and have time to prepare their comment. I'm not necessarily opposed to hearing from the public on the first, but I do question whether that gives the public enough time to adequately consider this, consider their response, and plan to share a response prior to or at the meeting on the first. And while I appreciate and very much agree that this is not and should not be a partisan process here, it will inevitably be political in that political involves multiple conflicting sides. And I think to the extent that we are talking about 5% of the population changing wards, I didn't run the exact percentage on how many voters are changing wards. I think it would be important to ensure we do have sufficient time to get that input from the public, to, to minimize the contentiousness of this decision that will affect the city for the next decade and presumably beyond that.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Sykes?
Yeah, I would like also to speak in favor of that, to my mind, there's no particular rush, and that involving the public in this process is helpful. I know that a lot of voters are used to who they have representing them, and they're also used to their, their ward that they go to. And anytime you change these, I know that we're going to have to make some changes. That's, that's a given. But if we hear more from the public, I don't think that's such a bad thing.
So I'm just going to feed off these comments I'm hearing. A couple of options are, we schedule the public hearing for December 1st, and if we don't feel we've got sufficient input, we move the decision beyond that. Or you could schedule the public hearing for December 15th, if you wanted to give automatically another budget. That's always the budget. Good point, good point.
January would be my proposal.
So then I would suggest that the, the two options are, you schedule for December 1st, see what you get for input, and then you have the option to move it into the first meeting in January. Or you move it to the first meeting in January. Yes, Counsel Heister, then Counsel Widdowson?
We all view things quite differently at various times, and as things develop in town, your perspective changes. And I have always been very proud of Lebanon, that we have been able to step aside and not have a political haranguing that you hear down in other places. And I think that in the last year or a year and a half, we've had elements that have, things that have happened nationally that have stimulated a point of concern which is valid. But I don't think that we would do well to get into a political situation that you've seen in some kind, some cities. I hope that we can go through this without having a political football, but we come out with something that people feel that they've been honestly heard, honestly respected, and that they know where to go and vote and how to do it. And I think that we can do that without going into the depths of some cities we've had to try to swim through. So let's move forward, trying to work in together.
Thank you, Counsel Widdowson?
Thank you. I agree wholeheartedly with that, and hope that we can mitigate any chance of a negative contentious discussion with this. And to that, I just had a question, which is, assuming we schedule a public hearing for the first, we don't get sufficient input from the public that we feel we can make the decision, are we then able to schedule another public hearing on the same topic? Or is this a single opportunity for a public hearing?
No, it's not a single opportunity. We, we could absolutely move that forward to the first meeting in January. We're not constrained to only taking testimony and doing a vote on the first.
Thank you.
Yes, Counsel Widdowson?
I mean, I guess that's kind of my point, is like, I don't want to wait six weeks to have the first hearing if we want to really get people's input. But like, if, we have three hearings on, you know, say like, we, we just had the third hearing on La Paz, right? Or, so like, why not just plan and say, like, we, we want to have a first hearing, we want people to be engaged. If we don't feel like they've, we've gotten sufficient input, we know we have the, the first of the year, and do that. But also bear in mind, we do have an election coming up in March. You don't want to necessarily push it to, you know, a month, like, a few weeks, be right before the election, because that's going to be just as confusing to people. So you got to get, you kind of balance that need to, for people to prepare, to understand where they're going to be voting. But like, again, just because we meet and discuss about this and talk to the public about this in a couple of weeks, doesn't mean we have to make that decision then. So that's why I'm saying, it's like, let's have that hearing. We can, again, plan on maybe having this, probably having a second hearing, but like, we don't need to delay it just because we're not sure we need two or one, or whatever.
Counsel Hill?
The data is right now, and right now is not available. So we're potentially asking people, setting a public hearing, to ask people to weigh in on something that they don't actually have the ability to, to actually kind of, you know, work with, and, and figure out if they agree or don't agree. You know, maybe it will be available tomorrow. But there's not, with, with Thanksgiving happening next week, there's just, you know, realistically not very much time for people, for people to find out that this is an issue, and then to engage with it, you know, in a really meaningful way. This is something that is going to affect people for 10 years. If anything, I think it would be more prudent for us to actually, instead of trying to rush through a decision now, because we have an election in March, I think it would actually be more prudent for us to carry on through the March election, maybe start taking input as we go, but then make, make changes after March of 2022. That would be, and then people will have the most amount of time before the November election to, you know, to understand the, how things might affect them. I don't mind putting, you know, if it, if it's a public hearing on December 1st, I just would like to point out, we currently have 10 proposed public hearings on December 1st. Now, I don't think it's really fair to ask people to have to come and sit through nine other public hearings, you know, to wait to have their turn to talk about this. And this is really important. The budget is also really important. I think everything deserves its chance to be heard. And I, I don't think that we can avoid dealing with the public hearings on the fees and things like that, that we just set and are in the process of setting, because we have the budget on December 15th. But we don't actually need to deal with redistricting right now. The House is already doing what they're doing. The Senate, what, how Lebanon's ward boundaries are affected does not affect the state senate. So it's just, it's just not, it's, um, it's not meaningful to the senate right now, whereas it is extremely meaningful to the people of Lebanon. And so that's why I am, you know, respectfully asking the council to consider, you know, at least, to consider ways that we can invite the public to be, to collaborate with us in this, to invite the public to think about how they define their neighborhoods. And yes, we have to do that with, in conjunction with these census blocks. And that's not something that most people have to do. And I think that giving them a really short window of time, I think is probably doing a bit of a disservice to, to our, to our neighbors and, and our community. And I think that we lose nothing by putting this into January, which I, we don't have the agenda for January, but presumably, we don't have, we know we don't have 10 public hearings scheduled for the first meeting of January. We know that. And so I think, you know, looking at the calendar, looking at the relative importance of this issue, I think scheduling a public hearing for early January is, is a good idea.
Anyone else?
May I mention just a couple things?
Certainly.
Um, I just wanted to follow up with a couple of the comments made about being mindful about the elections, which were very good points. You can take all the time you want, absolutely. I just want to throw a few things out there for you to keep in mind. Obviously, as was mentioned, the March election's in place, but the filing period for that does begin at late January. So if you're going to do it in January, and you can't complete it before that filing period opens, it probably would be prudent to wait until after March. But one of the other elections that wasn't mentioned is we do have a state primary that comes up in September, and I'm going to have absentee ballots that I have to start sending out in July. And those are sent by ward. They're all assigned a ward. So if you're going to do it after March, fine, but my request is to please, if you can try to wrap it up by July, that would be awesome. That's my only request.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay. Well, I guess if, does someone want to make a motion to schedule this public hearing for December 1st? Does someone want to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for January 5th? What's, what's your pleasure, Counsel?
There's a problem with January 5th, because that's going to be pretty much an all-night air of thought for zoning amendment change. That's a consuming process.
I'm sorry, I can't get any...
Uh, the January 5th is the night, we're doing all the zoning amendments, and that's a pretty long process, as you probably remember. You might want to consider having another night if you're going to do that.
So we could do a special meeting, or we could do it on the 19th?
If you're going to do it that far out, my suggestion is that we could come back, give us some possible dates on December 1st, if you're not going to do December 1st.
Okay. Yes, Counsel Hill?
I would, I mean, obviously, I would be in favor of that. But I would also be very interested in learning, what are the process, what is the process that other cities in New Hampshire have followed for this? And how have they engaged the public in the redistricting process, in the map, in the map drawing process? I'd love to hear how other communities have done this. Maybe, maybe the clerk would be able to find out from the clerks in the other cities, for example.
Yes, I can reach out to other clerks if you'd like.
Thank you, Kristin. All right. So would anyone like to make a motion with regard to December 1st? Apparently, no. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion for another date, or you just want to wait for staff to get back to us? Everybody shaking their hand, heads up and down on waiting for staff to get back to us. Okay. All right, that's a directional heading. Okay. Thank you.